Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, November 12, 2019. Prior to our roll call this evening, I would like to, once again, remind anyone who would like to make any comments tonight, you're certainly free to do that. We welcome public participation. You may do that at a couple of places on the agenda. D, under public participation, you can talk about any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda. If you would prefer to wait until we get to an item on the agenda to which you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to also wait for that time, and we'll get you on. If you would like to speak tonight, we would ask you to kindly fill out a speaker request form there in the back of the room. Kindly give those to our city clerk, Lynn Fazekas. Lynn will get those up to me, and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. Now, having said that, roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finuchin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Seven present.
For those of you in the audience tonight, if you'd be so kind as to address your attention to the monitor, please. As we salute, as we salute, and thank the veterans across this community, across this county, across this state, across this nation, we thank you, veterans, for your service. Would you please join me, stand, and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we work very hard to make DeKalb one of the more veteran-friendly cities in this region and in this state, I'd like to call on Mike Embry, a veteran himself of the U.S. Air Force, and a person who has been the catalyst for so many recent events in the city of DeKalb, to call attention to our veterans. And I'd like, Mike, to take just a few minutes to explain where DeKalb, Illinois is on this Veterans' Day 2019. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. We're very excited. We had two formal ceremonies yesterday on Veterans' Day. We had one at Northern Illinois University, which we honored our veteran students, which were quite a few of them. Over 560 NIU students are veterans, and so we're kind of proud to work with those young people, to be active and get them involved with our community. We also had a formal ceremony at our memorial clock, which we want to thank our city manager, Mr. Nicholas, who came out and spoke to the people in attendance. So we're very aggressive with what we're doing on Veterans' Day. Also, yesterday, we spoke at two different schools, telling the young people how to honor a veteran, how to walk up to somebody in uniform, whether it's a first responder or a military veteran, and say, "Thank you for your service." I think it's really important that the young people do that. I know Carolyn has been with us at some of the other schools. We have another school to do this week. So we've been active in the area. Very important that we thank Andy Rye for all his efforts to help us put our veteran banners up downtown. That has probably allowed more people to our downtown area than probably anything we had. They came down and saw their family members, and it was a great honor for that. So, Andy, thank you very much, you and your team, for doing that. And two projects we have going right now. Number one, we've had a grant by the DeKalb Elks, who made a pledge of $3,500 to buy new uniforms for the American Legion Honor Guard for military funerals and services. It's a matching grant, and we're $500 short of meeting that $3,500, so we're working to complete that. The second project we're doing in the downtown in, for DeKalb, and we've been doing this for five years now, is our Sweets for Troops program, where we collect leftover candy from the Halloween or that area. And we take those treats, and we put them with the other items, and we send them overseas to our active military. So our Sweets for Troops, and I want to thank our fire chief for being one of the areas that we allowed to drop off the candy. So thank you, chief, for that, as well. So we are probably the most veteran-friendly, I know Sycamore doesn't like when I say that, but we're the most veteran-friendly city in northern Illinois, not only with our banner program, but with our welcoming arms to all our veterans. And we're the only city in northern Illinois that has reserved veteran parking in the downtown area. So that's pretty good. Along with that, people have got on board and supported us. I don't know how many, and our city council member's here, but we have three veterans there, Ms. Morris, and Mayor Smith, and Mr. Favor, who's had their picture on a pizza box. I mean, that's a pretty high honor. I mean, you've reached the pinnacle of your success, when you have your military picture on a pizza box. So I do want to thank the city of DeKalb and everybody involved for supporting our veteran projects. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Let's give Mike a hand for all he's done.[488.81][488.81](Applause). And I would like to commend Mayor Lang and the city of Sycamore for just introducing the Sycamore Grove. They're going to be planting 50 trees in honor of 50 veterans over there, and I know Kurt feels very, very strongly, as we do, that we got, you know, to honor our veterans is certainly the appropriate thing to do. So I commend the city of Sycamore for doing that. Now, let's move on with our agenda. We're at now item C, approval of tonight's agenda. This is a point where we ask city council members if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda. If there are none, we will vote to approve the agenda as printed. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Morris. Discussion? Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
The agenda is approved as printed. We now move to item D, public participation. If there are any individuals wishing to speak to this, to any item on the agenda, or any item not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to do that. Lynn, do you have any speaker request forms over there? Okay, we have had no one fill out a speaker request form. Okay, very good. But then we'll move along to presentations. We have a very special presentation tonight. I'm so proud to be able to listen to something that many of you perhaps read about in the paper, and our city manager, Bill Nicholas, and fire chief Jeff McMaster will take the honor now to speak to this item. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear us?
Sorry.
As you said, Mayor, and as Mike said, we owe a lot to our first responders and our veterans, and tonight I'd like to briefly commend those people who performed a water rescue about 10 days ago. As I read your names, would you please come forward? A few people were not able to make it tonight, but almost everyone else is here. I'm going to read your names. If you could come up here behind me, and then I'll read the commendation. I'll start at the top of the rank. Deputy Fire Chief Bart Gilmore, Battalion Chief Jeff Dozendal, Captain Todd Stoffa, Lieutenant Chris Siola, Lieutenant Wade Schnick, Lieutenant Tom Conley, firefighter/paramedic Steve Cruz, firefighter/paramedic Noah Millard, firefighter/paramedic Trevor Chilton, firefighter/ Sean Freeman, I think Sean was not able to make it tonight, firefighter/paramedic Joe Fisher, firefighter/paramedic Greg Thornton, firefighter/paramedic Robert Terry, firefighter/paramedic Joe Wimpy, and firefighter/paramedic Joe Long. On November 1st, at approximately 8:56 in the morning, you responded to an emergency call that an SUV had left the roadway and landed upright in the middle of the Kishawaki River, near the 300 block of West Lincoln Highway. On this morning, temperatures were in the 30s, snow covered the ground, and the river depth and current were greater than normal due to recent heavy rains. Cruz arrived at the scene to find a conscious and alert patient in need of emergency medical attention, and extrication from the driver's seat of the vehicle was necessary. Five crew members donned water rescue suits and entered the river with taglines. They assessed the patient in the water while ground support crew discussed the rescue plan, set up a Z rig for a low-angle rope rescue, secured a horizontal ladder to span from the shoreline to the vehicle door. Water rescue crew extricated and secured the patient on a backboard and conveyed the patient along the ladder and into a Stokes basket. The patient was then lifted up a steep embankment and taken to the ambulance on standby. Crew members worked collaboratively and quickly to assess and extricate the patient from the vehicle. They also constructed the low-angle mechanical advantage system and manned the lines and backed up rescue lines downstream. In addition, two crew members remained on scene to assist the towing company to remove the vehicle from the water. These duties were performed in the most professional and efficient manner possible to achieve the positive outcome that I've just described to you. As a result of your actions, you are recognized and commended for your exemplary performance. A certificate of commendation will be presented to each of you by the fire chief after this meeting. And I just want to say, and I think all of you are aware of this, in exigent circumstances, it takes cool heads, it takes people who are able to improvise and to act and lead when time is of the essence and when people are in need. And each one of these people did that, and did so very professionally, very deliberately, and very calmly. I'm very proud of them. We owe them a great round of applause.[831.19][831.19](Applause). And this is not part of the commendation, but I'm told that Trevor Chilton was the wettest, and Noah Millard wasn't far behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all you do. Thank you.
Okay, we now move to item F on the agenda tonight, and this, once again, is something very, very special. Number one, the appointment of Gregory J. Perkins as our Fourth Ward Alderman until his successor qualifies and takes office. First of all, I'd ask for a motion to approve this mayoral appointment of Gregory J. Perkins.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven aye.
That's about as unanimous as it can get, Greg Perkins. If you'd come forward with your family, I'd like to ask our city clerk, Carolyn Fazekas, to join you, and she will swear you in as an official alderman of the city of DeKalb.
(Music) From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of Tennessee, across the plains of Texas, from sea to shining sea, from Detroit down to Houston and New York to LA. There's pride in every American heart, and it's time we stand and say. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land. God bless the USA. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land. God bless the USA.
As we salute, as we salute, and thank the veterans across this community, across this county, across this state, across this nation, we thank you, veterans, for your service. Would you please join me, stand, and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land. God bless the USA.
As we salute, as we salute, and thank the veterans across this community, across this county, across this state, across this nation, we thank you, veterans, for your service. Would you please join me, stand, and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land. God bless the USA.
As we salute, as we salute, and thank the veterans across this community, across this county, across this state, across this nation, we thank you, veterans, for your service. Would you please join me, stand, and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land. God bless the USA.
As we salute, as we salute, and thank the veterans across this community, across this county, across this state, across this nation, we thank you, veterans, for your service. Would you please join me, stand, and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land. God bless the USA.
As we salute, as we salute, and thank the veterans across this community, across this county, across this state, across this nation, we thank you, veterans, for your service. Would you please join me, stand, and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm proud to be an American, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me, and I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt, I love this land.
So, okay, well, let's move along. Number two, appointment of India Washington to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a term through June 30, 2021. This is a mayoral appointment. I appoint a number of board and commissioners, board folks to our boards and commissions. I'm asking now for the approval of India Washington to the DeKalb Public Library Board. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
That appointment is approved. Thank you. Consent agenda, this is an item that is usually enacted by one motion, unless someone requests that a separate discussion of one of the items is to take place. The following items are being considered in their entirety. Number one, minutes of the Joint Review Board meeting of July 26, 2019. Number two, minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of October 28, 2019. Number three, minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 28, 2019. Number four, accounts payable and payroll through November 12, 2019, in the amount of $1,554,409.87. And number five, fire and police pension fund municipal compliance reports for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018. Are there any items that would, anyone would like removed? If not, we will vote in one motion and one vote. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? Roll call.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight aye.
The consent agenda is approved as printed. There are no public hearings tonight. There are no other considerations this evening. So we'll move right into item J, resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2019-148, establishing an estimated annual tax levy, calling for the tax year 2019. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas, if you'd speak to this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of information in your background.
There certainly is.
Part of this is our obligation under state law. The Truth in Taxation statute requires that every year, as we're considering a levy for the taxes to be paid in the following year, that we will present the public with a comparison of the previous year's levy and what's proposed for the coming, for the coming year. And as I've noted in some detail in the background, the rate-setting EAV for 2018, which was later part of the calculation that gave rise to the taxes payable in 2019, was almost $548 million. The levy that was approved by this council in 2018 produced a tax rate of 1.1883 percent. And what is proposed here tonight, based on some direction that we got from the Finance Advisory Committee and also from the council at the last regular meeting, is a levy that's based on an overall EAV for the community of just under $593 million. And without going into a lot of detail, the estimated tax levy amount, including the library levy, is around $8.5 million, and that represents a 4.73 percent increase from 2018. It doesn't qualify for the public hearing, that's part of the Truth in Taxation statute, but we recommend that we have a hearing anyway. I think it's a good idea, any year, to have a hearing, so people can come and be heard on what the proposed levy is. Now, what actually comes through as a corporate levy is considerably less than that. We back out the library levy. We do include the library debt payment, which is just about the same as last year, $4,000 less, $490,075. So the corporate levy that we're proposing is $6,759,724. And on the basis of that $592 million estimated EAV, rate-setting EAV, we should see a city tax rate of 1.403 percent, which is 4 percent lower than the city rate in 2018. As you know, and you will be seeing ordinances to this effect at the, one of the next meetings, we are also required to levy for special service areas and for debt service. We tend to abate those, they're not considered part also of that Truth in Taxation notice and public hearing requirement. But I've shown what those amounts would be in the background. We are going to abate all debt service levies except for that portion, as I already mentioned, that's related to the 2013 library expansion project, and the numbers are portrayed in charts in your background. We recommend your approval of this resolution.
As Bill indicated, we had chatted quite a bit about this in FAC and council. Any further comments? It's been moved and seconded that we approve this tax levy. Roll call. Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved. Number two, Resolution 2019-149, authorizing the sale of real property located at 402 Gerler Street. That's PIN 08-23-403-002, in the amount of $7,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? If not, City Manager Nicholas.
Just, as I mentioned in the background, this is a rather small and narrow residentially zoned parcel, and we feel that's a fair price at the location, and we recommend your approval.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2019-150, authorizing the sale of real property located at 1015-1017 Market Street. That's PIN 08-23-256-011, in the amount of $10,500. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number four, Resolution 2019-151, approving a real estate contract for the sale of real property located at 1101 North First Street. That's PIN 08-14-305-018, and the closing of the transaction. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you. This is, as you recall, a follow-up to an action taken by the council two meetings ago to approve the sale, the sale of 1101 North First Street. There are still some mitigation responsibility involved there, and so we thought it would be best, and the city attorney recommended, that we proceed with a contract which details the responsibility, reciprocal responsibilities, and particular responsibilities of the buyer. The buyer has read these. They're enumerated in your background on page eight, and we believe with your approval the contract will be executed, and we can go to close on this property.
Any discussion of this? Anytime remediation is involved, I would think we're probably going to have to do this, and so I appreciate the heads up from you, City Manager Nicholas, and Attorney Donahue. Alderman Fanoukis.
City Manager, would you and the attorney make clear to the public what risks the city still has in regard to the, any future remediation to be done on this property?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Thank you. The city is in the chain of title, which means anytime you're in the chain of title, you're always at risk that the United States or state EPA wants all those in the prior chain of title to take some corrective action. So it's in our best interest to have this individual purchase this property and to remediate all the hazardous substances from the old gas station that was, that was once there and inactive. So that is certainly within our best interest. Although we, in our contract, have put all the burden on him to do that and to pay for that, that is just a contractual agreement between the city and the buyer. If, as a normal process, the US EPA and the IEPA typically does not go after kind of passive holders like the city of this type of property unless they think that somehow we've done something wrong. So I wouldn't expect us to be involved in any kind of enforcement action if this buyer was unsuccessful in remediating the property, or, for example, it turned out when they got into it, it was a lot worse than anyone ever would have anticipated, or new things came up. But you normally wouldn't expect that, but theoretically can't happen as long as you're in the chain of title.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comment, any other comments or questions? If not, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That resolution is, and that contract is approved. Okay, we move now to item K on your agenda, ordinances, second reading. Number one, ordinance 2019-069, amending Chapter 23, Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5, Zoning District Regulations, and Article 7, Supplementary District Regulations of the City of DeKalb, Illinois Municipal Code, as it pertains to adult use of cannabis. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukis, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas, please, if you have anything to add to this.
Just what I said in the background, we were aiming to address a couple of the concerns raised at the last meeting under first reading, in particular to sharpen the delineation of the 250-foot buffer with respect to NIU's properties, and also to reword the reference to other types of cannabis establishments so as not to discourage interest in their development in conformist with state statute. And the city attorney drafted the language, which is in your background on page nine.
Any discussion? Alderman Smith.
City Manager, one quick question that was brought to my attention. If the university or a non-moves within that 250-foot barrier, what requirements will be put on the cannabis ordinance at that point? In other words, we put someone in a area, obviously a retail mall area or wherever they may go, and someone such as the university wants to rent property inside of that boundary, are we covered? I know, technical.
That's a good question.
But it was sent to me a couple of times.
Good question, but that does come up, for example, liquor establishments, things like that, someone moves next door when the cannabis establishment, as long as they're there first, would be protected.
That's what I figured. Thank you.
Yeah, so now like someone can move next door and then force them to leave and kick them out.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. Number L, ordinances on first reading. Number one, ordinance 2019-071, amending Chapter 38, Intoxicating Liquors, Section 38.18A, Caterer Event Permits. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The background describes something that's come to our attention just this year, possibly in earlier years as well. When a variety of entities, not-for-profits, for-profit businesses are looking to cater an event, we have a pretty elaborate structure that tends to discourage people who might be in that catering business, who are known to the business and are outside the city limits, don't have a city license, but they have a state license. So what we're trying to do here, without trying to stir the water in terms of our local businesses, is to allow for those opportunities because if we don't, people are just getting discouraged and going someplace else to have their catered event. So we're trying to find a compromise here that allows the caterers who are already in business to continue and others to join their ranks, whether they're inside the city or not. Here, we're talking about the catering of alcohol events.
I think we've come a long way over the last year, year and a half in the city of DeKalb as it relates to caters, food trucks, et cetera, et cetera. So I commend the staff for working with these folks and moving forward. So this is an ordinance on first reading. We've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alderman Morris.
What does the $372 fee, application fee cover?
Mostly, it's, you know, we still have to do the background, and there's some work that has to be done on that, police department. We have other people. If it's an event in a building, a space that we're not familiar with, we, you know, the building department goes out there, other people go out there. So it defrays the administrative and staff costs. And also make sure that it's all cleaned up properly afterward.
Does this apply specifically to events of a certain size? Like, is there a, for example, if you're having an event catered and maybe it's a wedding and, you know, does this apply to events only over 20 guests, or?
No, it would be all, the way it's set up now and in the ordinance, it's set up for any event.
Okay, so this is a fee that the caterer pays annually?
Currently, yeah. Currently, they pay by the event, so we're cleaning that up, and so people are not hit every time after they've already passed our thresholds for professional operation and so forth. State license.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? If not, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That passes on first reading. Does any member want to wave, move to waive second reading and approve? No? Okay, we'll bring that, we'll bring that back for second reading. Number two, under ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 2019-072, amending Chapter 38, Intoxicating Liquors, Section 38.27, C8, Gambling Devices, by revising the number of liquor licenses for establishments that qualify as video gaming establishments, to include the property located at 1208 East Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukis, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Well, this is familiar to the council. We talked about this at the last meeting. We recommend your approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll, roll, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yep.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Much to make emotional, we waive second reading and approve.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanoukis, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That ordinance is approved. Number three, ordinance 2018-073, authorizing the implementation of impact fee waivers for new construction permits for attached single-family townhomes in the Weinberry, South Point Greens, and River Mist subdivisions. It was called to my attention prior to the meeting tonight that that perhaps should read the Gardens of River Mist subdivisions. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Mayor, this also was discussed at the last meeting, and the person who had proposed this, the private contractor and developer, would like to proceed, so we ask that you approve this on first and second tonight.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion to waive second reading and approve. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanoukis.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That ordinance is approved as presented. Now we're on item M, Reports and Communication. This is a opportunity for any of our city council members, city clerk, and city manager to make any reports, and I would like to begin with our first ward, Alderman, Carolyn Morris.
I'm just going to briefly say that I remember when we had our meetings in the summer, our one extra meeting, our workshop, excuse me, that we discussed the idea of having some sort of survey or something put out to the community to draw feedback, to see what the community wants. And I just wanted to note that I would love to see us take action on that. I think that it's well overdue to get a community survey out there to understand what, what the community wants.
Thank you. As a matter, a matter of fact, I saw Kurt Thurmeier, who is really trying to shepherd that to us through us, so it's a good point. We probably should have that discussion, how we can best do that, you know, survey our community. Thank you, Carolyn. Anything else?
That's all. Thanks.
Alderman Fanoukis.
In just over two weeks, the NIU Husky Stadium and the City of DeKalb, Destination DeKalb, are hosting the IHSA Football Championships here on Friday and Saturday after Thanksgiving. A number of volunteers are still needed to help with that event. If you're interested in volunteering, they have a lot of different options, some inside, some outside. Please call the Destination DeKalb at 877-335-2521, or contact Brett Hoy at NIU Athletics.
Great event, brings in probably close to, between three-quarters of a million dollars and a million dollars into our economy over those two days.
Right. I have one other item, too.
Yeah, sure.
A week from this Friday, at the Salvation Army, they'll be collecting turkeys for distribution the following week at Thanksgiving. So I believe it's any time from 7:00 AM till about 4:00 PM that day. If you would bring a frozen turkey or any other frozen meat item to the Salvation Army at Eighth and Grove, Ninth and Grove, rather, it'd be greatly appreciated.
And that usually gets a wonderful response from our community. Thank you, Alderman Fanoukis. Okay, Alderman Smith.
Real brief, I've spent a lot of time downtown as we, as we think we're getting what we want, and that's the downtown to grow. And I've noticed that maybe we can add some 15-minute spots down in some key areas downtown to help the movement of people down through town. Specifically, I'd like to see if, Mr. Nicholas, we could bring back something for 15 minutes at Second Locust, Southeast Corner, for starters, and then go from there. Thank you.
Doesn't downtown look great now and during the night with all those lights? I mean, I was really impressed the other night when I came down, so. Okay, anything else, Tracy?
No, sir. Thank you.
Alderman Perkins.[1797.66]
No report.
No report. Okay, I understand. Alderman McAdams?
No report.
And Alderman Verbic?
No report.
And Alderman Favor?
I just want to say, welcome to our new Alderman, and no other report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one comment, or one communication. This past Saturday afternoon, Police Chief Petragallo and I met briefly with Nikita Boulari and Alexis Hughes Woods, as they, as leaders, completed a rally that attracted a group of about 100 marchers. The peaceful demonstration featured a number of stops, and I commend everyone who took part for the civil manner in which the march was conducted. The chief and I were presented with four demands. All were made in a respectful manner by Ms. Boulari and Ms. Hughes Woods. I respectfully accepted those written demands and assured the group that, as mayor, I would respond in a timely manner. I begun that process and will work with Chief Petragallo in addressing the concerns that were brought forth on Saturday. Prior to this weekend's march, I had the chance to chat briefly with Pastor Joe Mitchell, who helped coordinate the logistics of the event. I mentioned to Joe that I felt that we, he and I, both shared a hero in Dr. Martin Luther King, and that, to paraphrase Dr. King, "I too had a dream." I said, "Joe, my dream is that within a short period of time, DeKalb will be known as a showcase community in how true social justice can be attained through thoughtful and honest discussions with one another." And Saturday's march was just another step, I believe, in that direction. Thank you. City Clerk Fazigus?
No report.
City Manager Nicholas?
Couple of things. Welcome, Councilmember Perkins. I look forward to working with you, and I know all of our executive team do as well. In answer to Councilmember Smith, we'll work up something relating to that parking request for one of the next two meetings, but as soon as possible.
Thank you.
And work with the police department on that. And for Councilmember Morris, the survey, I recall that, we've been oriented toward development and some budget matters in the last couple of months, but if it's okay with you, we'd like to do that thoughtfully and come up with a framework and a survey draft, kinds of questions that might be asked for, subject to council's approval, in the January meeting, maybe a COW in second meeting in January. We have a COW planned for the first meeting in January now, so if that's agreeable to you. People might also be more inclined to respond to that, whether it's a digital or electronic survey, or paper, or whatever, after the holidays than they might be in the rush of the holidays, leading up to the holidays. So if that's agreeable, that's what we'll do. And thank you, Alderman Fanouken, for that number. We've been searching for that number around here, so that's very helpful. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Bill, I don't know if any of our department heads, et cetera, while they're have anything, I'd just like to say on behalf of the City of DeKalb and the residents, I want to thank Andy Rye and all the people in Public Works, and Brian, and all of your work over this past weekend. I mean, what a mess. Leaves, snow, trying to traverse through that. It had to be somewhat of a nightmare, and believe me, I can't say enough on behalf of the residents, we do appreciate your efforts. We really do, and I want you to thank everyone for the fine work that your folks have done over this last weekend. With that, we do have an executive session tonight. Number one, approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss the purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C5. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to recess to executive session.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins, that we recess into executive session. Any discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Our regular meeting is now in recess for executive session. Thank you very much.